So, we're gonna hold our February the 10th regular meeting. And I'll call the meeting to order at this time. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Frank, I'd like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda to include an overnight filter request for the ROTC academic team. They advanced in competition and hope to travel at the end of this month. Ms. Smith added this trip, request our packet, and if amended, we will include this documentation on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve that, the agenda change.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Abernathy, a second by Mr. Barksdale. Is there any further discussion on the agenda change? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. Okay, item number three on the agenda is invocation. We will now have an invocation. At this time, I invite you all to join with us or engage in a moment of silent reflection. And Mr. Abernathy, if you will lead us in that, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Lord, help us to be faithful in prayer. Be with our students, keeping them safe and eager to learn. Be with our school staff, our teachers, and this board as we deliberate. Lord, prosper the work of our hands and know that we welcome your presence. Amen.
Mr. McGinnis, you would introduce the NJROTC.
At this time, we'd like to have the presentation of the colors by the NJROTC color guard led by Master Chief or the instructor present is Master Chief David Crowson. So, would you like to speak more about what this academic accomplishment is?
I guess it's on, right? Good enough?
Yes, sir.
On Saturday, we traveled to our region, which were mixed among three states with our unit, with two other state areas as well. We traveled to that region and did really well, better than we had anticipated. And as a result, we were invited to the Area Eight Championship, which is all of our region among the three states. The top 16 teams will go there to compete against other teams in academic knowledge in a Jeopardy-style question and point system with timed answers and such among, again, the best 16 schools in our region. McDowell, in our pre-qualification, qualified fifth, we expect that we'll do a little bit better at the top 16. But if we don't, I'm extremely proud of our team. We've come a long way already with the change of guard with myself and First Sergeant Miley. And we've been blessed to inherit a great group of cadets for our first year, and they are just performing flawlessly. So, we appreciate the board's flexibility. We appreciate the support of our principal as well and making sure that we can continue. So, again, thank you to everyone, you know, the superintendent, Dr. Grit, and the board for being flexible and allowing us to continue our journey. Thank you.
Colors, hold. Right face. Present, colors.
Salute, please.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carefree, total. Ready, cut. Post. Ready to post. Forward, march.
Okay, sir. Item number five on the agenda is superintendent remarks. You take that.
Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Frank, ladies and members, gentlemen of the board, also for our folks out there with us tonight, we appreciate everybody being here. We've got an exciting evening tonight. We want to begin by recognizing the number of the staff who are here to receive accolades for their outstanding work when they're lined up in the hallway just upstairs from here, making room for all them. That's a good sign of the work that's taking place here in McDowell County Schools. Reflecting on the '24-'25 school year, events include a hurricane in the mountains that we have never experienced in western North Carolina, snow and ice could be even as often as maybe in the next day or so, and the most recent wildfires. Despite those odds, we have resilient educators here to receive awards for their incredible work in the classroom to progress our students. I'll take that type of resilience any day of the week. Our team is strong, and I'm proud of not only the work of the teachers and principals, but I'm also very proud of our men and women who are still driving around bridges and making passes on side roads that are not part of a regular bus route, as roads and temporary bridges are improving every day. I'm also incredibly proud of our maintenance and operations staff, who on top of their regular work week, have worked overtime numerous days in the school year to help us make progress at Old Ford Elementary, and the most recent support to help us get into mobile units in place at Pleasant Gardens Elementary. Board, did you know that Mr. Haynes and the staff of the child nutrition team have served half a million meals this year? On a typical year, that's a lot, but from shuttling from kitchen to kitchen to accommodate our students at Pleasant Gardens, Old Ford is, and that's a shining example of going the extra mile. The extra mile is evident throughout our organization, and I'm proud of the incredible amount of work that's been done, and it's just February. Tonight, Mr. Marsh will speak with you about the many facility improvements and progress we've made at Old Ford. Mr. Hughes will present a calendar for next year's school and share our newest student information system, which is set to begin in 2025 and 2026 school year. Board, we will also review our audit tonight, which coincidentally was another clean audit, something McDowell County Schools and Ms. Rampy's team have turned in for nearly two decades. Think about that. When you're talking about $80 million, that is not an easy lift. Again, saying that I'm proud of the work in McDowell County is an understatement. This work to support our students is not only done by our employees, the work in the community to help support us this year has been incredible. Most notably, the work from the McDowell Emergency Services, the McDowell County Sheriff's Office, the Marion and Old Ford Police Department, and such offices as the State Highway Patrol, the Department of Transportation, and a host of other agencies that banded together during a hurricane have remained steadfast in protecting and saving lives in our community so that our schools can operate free of disruptions. That said, the hopes called that our school received on January 21st is a day that we will never forget, as our brave men and women in emergency services and friends in law enforcement coordinated with our high school staff stood strong to ensure that our schools were safe. I know I said this at our board work session, but I want to reiterate how proud I was of the response, including the arrest of a 16-year-old caller from Sacramento, California. Not only in the response, but in the follow-through, we were one of at least three schools that had received a similar call from this student, and it was our team, Sheriff, it was our team that tracked the suspect down and put the pieces together that led to his arrest. Safety is always of paramount concern, and I have no doubt that if we ever receive the call, the Calvary will be coming to keep our kids safe at school. The resilience in this community is on full display, especially if you've been following some of our teams this season. We just had the NJROTC who left, which they placed second in the region in the drill team. They spoke about their spot, trying to earn a spot in the Nationals for Academics. He left out the fact that they're also working for a spot in the Nationals for Marksmanship. Both of those are coming up in the coming weeks. Our Lady Titans basketball team currently are undefeated and ranked number one in the state, while our men's basketball team and wrestling teams are once again in the top of their conference standings. As I wrote these remarks, I couldn't help but think of how fortunate we are to have such great students and staff, and how important it is to have our community standing with us. Thank you to everyone in attendance tonight and those still working to keep our community safe this evening for always keeping our students' needs first and standing with us as we progress in 2025. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I get to make some remarks, which is not often, but they are well-deserved. And I just want to tell you how proud I am of our school system, and I'm gonna say this, this is my school system. And if I go back and I look through the years, I look at the leader is not born, he's gotta achieve it. He's got to have the respect of his colleagues, and he's got to show leadership qualities. And I'm gonna say this, Ms. Daddell, you're a leader, and it sticks out to me how a single father had a 13-year-old daughter, and you got her hair ready for a dance recital, and that's going beyond the call of duty, and I've never forgot that. Ms. Hamby, I don't see her in here. She's upstairs, okay. I remember telling her husband, you gotta get her an education, and she went down to Glenwood, and Ms. McNeely obviously saw something she liked in her and hired her, and now she's an assistant superintendent, of course, Ms. Daddell's HR. And I can't help but say this, that everybody in this room that's connected with the school system, regardless if you're a bus driver or the superintendent, every job is important. And Ms. Bennett, I'm gonna pull you on the spot here and tell what a great job you've been doing, and I'm gonna tell you, the Calvary did come. I'd give anything to have seen Chad Marsh when he was riding with Dr. Grit, charging to the high school and running through a gate with the Sheriff's Department to help things out over there. And I appreciate you and all the things that you've done. And I'm gonna tell you, not only does a leader have to have connections inside the system, he's got to have connections outside the system as well, stakeholders and community leaders. He's got to have those to be successful. And with that being said, we've got two MVPs, and you know, we just had the Super Bowl, but we've got two MVPs in here tonight, Sheriff Ricky Buchanan and the Director of Emergency Services, William Keller. And if you guys go up to the podium, I'd appreciate it. I know you've got something you'd like to say, and I just appreciate both of you.
Well, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. And what I'd like to speak to is directly involving that Tuesday, January 21st. So, Mr. Chairman and School Board, I've made some remarks here that I'd like to read to you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I wanted to publicly recognize and acknowledge the response by the staff and students of McDowell High School, our McDowell High School Resource Officer, Trey Spearman, and specifically Superintendent Grit, Mr. Marsh, and Principal Bennett on Tuesday, the 21st. So, Mr. Grit, if you'll accompany me up here. Ms. Bennett, I see you. If you'll step up as well. I don't know if Mr. Marsh is in here or not. As you are aware, the Sheriff's Office, along with multiple law enforcement agencies and emergency services personnel, responded to a report of an active shooter on the campus of McDowell High School. As 911 telecommunicators were giving the information to us as we were responding, I was genuinely thinking, this is it. I'm responding to one of my worst nightmares. Our SRO, Trey Spearman, immediately went into action without hesitation. He began searching the school for that threat. His response was admirable and heroic, as I was extremely proud to have him at that school at that moment. I, along with others, were rushing to the school with bulletproof vests and firearms to stop that active threat on our students and on our teachers. And as I entered the school, I was greeted by the superintendent, Tracy Grit, and Mr. Marsh, already there, no vest, no firearm, but there, ready to do whatever they could to help. We set up a quick command in the commons area and was quickly joined by Principal Bennett. They were quick to respond to whatever was needed and was able to help with quick answers on much-needed information. And I never heard the answer, "No," and I never heard "We can't" come from any of the staff while we were there. The students and staff reacted quickly. They were quick to go into the lockdown procedure that we practice routinely, and they did a fantastic job, which allowed us to focus on the campus and on the areas of specific interest in the information we were given. In closing, I want to tell you that you should be proud of your staff. Every one of you, I hope you're hearing me, proud of your staff, beginning with the superintendent. It was obvious on that Tuesday morning, the love and care he has for the children that attend that school and for those that work in that school. And that same love and care was on display by the other staff on scene as well. I watched as students were released, as they walked by staff members, to include Principal Bennett, quickly giving hugs and shedding tears of relief. Many responded and many staff assisted from the school system, but I specifically wanted you, the school board, to know how proud I was of Dr. Grit, Mr. Marsh, Ms. Bennett, as well as one of your own board members, Derek McGinnis, who is right in the middle of it with us. Their actions were heroic and without hesitation, and greatly assisted us in quickly securing that campus. I truly appreciate them and the strong working relationship that we have with McDowell County Schools. So, thank you for allowing me this time, and please join me in thanking these folks.
Mr. Keller, before you start, I'd like to let everybody know that we got the, in July, we'll have the president of the North Carolina Sheriff's Association in our county. That's quite an honor, and thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board, for asking us to say a few words tonight. Echo everything Sheriff Buchanan said. That is our worst nightmare, is to receive that call, and of what this community has went through since Hurricane Helene in September, I can't stand here and express the words or the feelings that I had on the way to that call that morning. But what I can tell you is what I saw walking through the front door, running through the front door, is that quick action of that unified command that makes every single disaster and incident run as smoothly as possible. And your school officials, being led by Dr. Grit, Mr. Marsh, and Ms. Bennett, exemplified everything that has been taught in Incident Command to emergency personnel, to administrators of every type of organization of when a crisis happens, this is what you should do, and that's exactly what they did. They put their job and the care, the love of students, staff, and others before their personal safety, and they were in the halls with us without vest, and they were there every step of the way to answer any question we have or provide assistance at the snap of a finger. I've said for many years, this is, this is my 18th year as the director here in the county, and there is one slogan that we have always said, is we are one team with one mission, and that mission is to protect life and property. The school system, being led by Dr. Grit, has exemplified that numerous times since September, and I mentioned that the last time I was here, and the active shooter call was no different. What makes this county unique, and I promise you, for those who have never heard this, this county is unique for the partnerships that we have in the way people work together. It just doesn't happen in other places. I've had the opportunity to deploy to numerous states across this nation for disasters, and it is always the same trouble in every disaster we go to, is people will not work together. And that just doesn't happen here. And this call, this incident, was another example. Dr. Grit, and I'm gonna say three things real quick about him and his staff. During Hurricane Helene, he never left our side. His staff never left our side. There's a picture that I'll present to him at a later date that I have framed, that he climbed off of a fuel truck to make sure that our vehicles never went without fuel and that the operation never ceased because we were running out of fuel. The swatting call, the team never left our side. The staff at the high school, so resilient, which I know is echoed throughout this community. And then a couple of weeks ago, the Cricket Creek Fire. Folks, we had flames running 40 to 50 feet in treetops that looked like something that you would see out of California, not western North Carolina. There was so much debris on the ground, the fight to save houses was just as real as it's ever been in this county. We had to keep fire trucks on the line for hours and hours and hours through the night. If we would have pulled fire trucks off of the line to go get fuel, we would have lost houses. One quick phone call that took maybe 15 seconds, and when I started and told him what I was gonna need, he never flinched. All he said is, "I'll get it on the way," and I asked, "I need your fuel truck, and I need it quickly." That's how things get accomplished here. It is one team, one mission, and it played out exactly like the sheriff said on the day of the swatting call. We all wear different types of uniforms and clothes, we all drive different colors of vehicles, but when the chips are down, everybody, state, federal, and local people that come to McDowell County know those people are gonna work together there. And it's an honor and privilege to get to work beside the leaders who exemplify that motto of one team, one mission. Sheriff Buchanan and all his staff, to Dr. Grit and the entire staff, supported by the school board, we thank you from Emergency Services. No one agency can do this together, and to protect our most precious children, it takes one team with that type of approach. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Sincerely appreciate our working relationship. It is second to none.
Thank you, sir.
And Dr. Grit, thank you for your leadership, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, sir. Back to you.
I kinda lost my place on the agenda.
Staff recognition, seven.
That was a surprise. It's good to see those guys. It's an honor and a privilege to get to work with them every day. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And thank Ms. Smith.
All right, we are up to our staff recognitions at this time, and we're gonna start by asking Ms. Daddell if she will come up and get us rolling.
Good evening, Mr. Frank, Mr. Abernathy, Dr. Grit, members of the board, and esteemed guests. I stand before you today with great enthusiasm and pride to celebrate and reward excellence in teaching. As educators, we understand the pivotal roles that teachers play in shaping the academic success of our students. Today, I get to present and recognize the remarkable achievements of our teachers. First up, we want to recognize teachers in grades third through eighth grade who received a growth bonus based on the '23-'24 school year. The growth bonuses recognize teachers in third through eighth grade reading and fourth through eighth grade math, whose growth index is in the top 25% of the state of North Carolina and the top 25% of McDowell County Schools. In many grade levels, it was easier to get the top growth in North Carolina than in McDowell County Schools, meaning that our schools and teachers outscored the growth throughout the state of North Carolina. So, please join me in recognizing the following teachers for the top growth in third, fourth, and fifth grade reading. First up, we have Ms. Dana Yelton from Marion Elementary School. She received both the state and LEA bonus. Next, we have Ms. Gabby Lancaster from West Marion Elementary, both state and LEA bonus. Ms. Michelle Warsham from Marion Elementary School, both state and LEA bonuses. Michelle Thompson from Old Ford Elementary School, both state and LEA bonuses. Ms. Felicia Stamey from Nevo Elementary School. Ms. Felicia Stamey from Nebo Elementary School, both state and LEA bonuses. And Ms. Jennifer Sloan from Old Ford Elementary, both state and LEA bonuses. In fourth grade, we have Ms. Tiffany Barker, both state and LEA bonus. We have Ms. Jackie McArthur from Glenwood Elementary School. Ms. McArthur has retired, but she did receive the state and LEA bonuses. We have Ms. Barbara Dyer from Old Ford Elementary, both state and LEA bonuses. Ms. Allison Rottow from West Marion Elementary, both state and LEA bonuses. Mr. Kelvin Valderas, both state and LEA bonuses. Ms. Heather Anderson from Glenwood Elementary School, received the state bonus. Ms. Natalie Morgan from Glenwood Elementary School, the state bonus. Ms. Donna Pye from Pleasant Gardens Elementary, the state bonus. Ms. Anna Helms from Pleasant Gardens Elementary with the state bonus. Ms. Freeman from Pleasant Gardens Elementary, both state and LEA bonus. Ms. Kendra Hughes from Eastfield Global Magnet School, both state and LEA bonuses. Ms. Bonita Mercurio from Old Ford Elementary School, the LEA bonus. We are going to ask all of these honorees to get closer together for a picture. Let's give them another round of applause. Next up, we will recognize growth for math in grades fourth through eighth grade. First up, we have Ms. Stephanie Mull from Glenwood Elementary School, both state and LEA bonus. We have Ms. Stephanie Rowland from Pleasant Gardens Elementary, both state and LEA bonuses. We have Ms. Tiffany Barker from Eastfield Global Magnet School, and she just stepped out for the reading, so she got the reading bonus, and she also received the math bonus, so she will probably be in here. She had to go around and come back in, but that's a huge accomplishment. Let's give Ms. Barker a round of applause. We have Jessica Capps from Eastfield Global Magnet School as well, both state and LEA bonuses. And here's Ms. Barker. Come on in, Ms. Barker. We have Ms. Taylor Stouffer for the state bonus. We have John Beck from Pleasant Gardens Elementary with the state and LEA bonuses. We have Ms. Shannon Chaffin from Eastfield Global Magnet School with both the state and LEA bonuses. We have Ms. Holly Woody from North Cove Elementary with the state bonus. We have Ms. Alicia Burnett from West McDowell Middle School, both the state and LEA bonuses. We have Ms. Katie Carter from West McDowell Middle School, both state and LEA bonuses. We have Ms. Cheryl Mulvey from East McDowell Middle School with the state bonus. We have Mr. Jack Jensen with the LEA bonus. Ms. Ashley Hightower from East McDowell Middle School with the LEA bonus. Ms. Mary Ambassney from East McDowell Middle School with both the state and LEA bonuses. And Ms. Christina Parton from West McDowell Middle School with both the state and LEA And we're going to ask these folks to get together for a picture. Congratulations. Thank you all so much. Let's give them one more round of applause. I'm extreme, this is not on my script, I'm extremely proud to introduce these folks, but I'm even more blessed to have worked with many of them as their colleagues and as their principal throughout the years of my career, and I could think of no better folks to honor. Our folks are pretty amazing. So, if you will please welcome up to the podium, Ms. Mary Finley, who will recognize our CTE teachers who received bonuses. Ms. Finley?
Good afternoon. This is always exciting to recognize the great things that our teachers do in CTE. In our CTE classes, students can earn at least one industry-recognized credential in every CTE pathway at McDowell High School. And achieving these credentials ensures that students graduate from high school globally competitive for work and post-secondary education. Some credentials offer bonus incentives for CTE teachers who provide instruction in a course that leads to students' attainment of an industry credential or certification. These McDowell High School teachers earn bonus pay for the 2024-25 school year by having students earn the following credentials. Mr. Clark Adams with the veterinary medical application certification, and he, Mr. Adams could not be here tonight. Ms. Angie Allison for certified guest services professional. Mr. Charles Autry for FEMA Emergency Management Institute and the 911 Basic Communications, and he is working teamwork for us tonight. Mr. Chad Brewer, the National Center for Construction Education and Research Construction Corps and Masonry. Mrs. Kristen Clark, accredited food protection manager and safe plates, and she could not be with us tonight. Mr. Charlie Davis, the Woodwork Career Alliance Sawblade Certification. Mr. Davis could not be with us tonight. Mr. Paul Davis, ASE Entry Level Certification for Maintenance and Light Repair. Mr. Wesley Minish for Adobe Photoshop Illustrator and End Design. Ms. Stacy Shaw for North Carolina Early Childhood Credential.
Our next set of recognitions is for our AP or Advanced Placement Course teachers. AP classes are taught at a rigorous level and help prepare students for college-level courses. Students may earn college credits by taking and passing the AP exam. Our AP teachers received a bonus based on student performance in their classes. A teacher may earn $50 per student or up to $3,500 per year. The following teachers earn the bonus for their AP courses. Let me turn my page. First up, we have Ms. Jennifer Gant. Ms. Miranda Ferguson. Ms. Dusty Josephiak. Ms. Seth Hunt. Ms. Jolie Weaver. Ms. Missy Redman. Mr. Stuart Massey. And Ms. Victoria Hudson. Let's give these a round of applause. Thank you all. Last, but certainly not least, we would like to congratulate all the dedicated educators who have achieved their national board certification this year. Their commitment to excellence, passion for teaching, and dedication to student success is truly inspiring. This prestigious accomplishment reflects our hard work, expertise, and continuous pursuing of professional growth. Their efforts not only enhance their own teaching practice, but also positively impact the lives of their students and the broader educational community. We celebrate their achievement and thank you for your unwavering dedication to shaping the future through education. The following teachers have earned their national boards, and so when I call their names out, I'd like for you to note that we had two couples, meaning two teachers that are married, two sets of teachers that are married, earn that together. So, that to me is a huge accomplishment because that is a ton of time and a ton of reflecting and a ton of supporting one another at home, as I'm sure that that could be a little stressful, so we need to celebrate them as well. First up, we have Mr. Wes Carpenter. Mr. Christian Lancaster. Mrs. Amber McKinney. And Ms. Hannah Hutchins. Let's give these all another huge round of applause. And I have to throw this in a little bit, but Ms. Hannah Hutchins I taught in third grade, and so that makes my teacher heart awfully, awfully proud to see her up here. But congratulations, if you don't know about this process, this is a year, year and a half, almost two-year process where they take specific teaching strategies and goals and work with kiddos, and they have to constantly reflect on that. They have to put that in words and paper, and that has to be sent off, and that has to be approved. They also have to take an exam, so this is basically going through another degree and another course, and these folks have done that while they still have a family, while they are still teaching, and so this is an amazing accomplishment. And for to have as many as we have here in McDowell County is truly amazing and really speaks to the caliber of educators that we have, so we are so proud of each and every one of you. Oh, I get to keep going, so I'm so excited. I love recognizing hard work that folks do because I think sometimes when we do our jobs day in and day out, it's hard, we're always focused in moving forward, and it's nice to be recognized for the hard work and the great things that happen each and every day in our schools. So, next up, we get to do our school recognitions, and so we get to recognize our schools that have met or exceeded growth from the 23-24 school year. So, when I call your name, I'd love for the principals to come up and get their certificate. First off, we have Eastfield Global Magnet School exceeded academic growth. We have East McDowell Middle School, who achieved academic growth award. Glenwood Elementary School, the academic growth award. McDowell Early College received two awards. They received an outstanding graduation rate of 100% and also exceeded academic growth We recognize McDowell Early, excuse me, McDowell Academy of Innovation for both outstanding graduation rate of 96% and exceeded academic growth award. Nebo Elementary School, the academic growth award. North Cove Elementary School, the academic growth award. Old Ford Elementary School with the academic growth award. And Pleasant Gardens Elementary School with the exceeded academic growth award. Let's give all these principals and schools a round of applause. Now, I'm going to take one more minute because I did leave a group out, and I would never, ever purposely do that, but each year after five years of receiving your national board certification, you have to renew, meaning that you have to go back through the process. And so, we definitely want to recognize those that recertified their national boards. And so, we have Ms. Chrissy Loftus, Ms. Leisha White, Ms. Alicia Burnett, Ms. Ashley Butler, and Ms. Stephanie Rourke. So, let's give them all a round of applause. I mean, I'm sure if I stood up here, I could think of a ton more awards to give, but that's all I'll recognize tonight.
Okay, I understand, Ms. Ray, you're going to do the Teacher of the Year.
Just a little.
Oh, okay.
I put out the other show. Good evening. Ms. Daddell called me, and she said, "Mr. Hill is sick." And I said, "Don't ask me to do the presentation," and she did, of course, and of course, I obliged, but... So, Mr. Hill was going to highlight Glenwood Elementary School today, and we have a presentation, you can go to the next one, of some great things that have happened at Glenwood first semester. So, the first exciting thing was that we went right after the hurricane to Sound to Sea and took our fifth graders, and this is in Pine Knoll Shore, and they were able to experience the sound and the sea, and it was an educational program. It was an amazing experience for our students to have hands-on learning in the environment they were learning about, the sound and the sea. We are grateful to Walmart for providing a small grant, helping our students to be able to afford to attend this, and we made sure that all students were able to go regardless of hardship because of the hurricane. So, it was a very exciting time, and we had a great time. We also hosted a fall festival that very same week. We came back from Sound to Sea, and then we had a fall festival that weekend, so we were very busy that week. But our PE teacher, Ms. Megan Morris, hosted a fall festival, and we had a great time, and our staff, I was super proud of them. They said, "Well, since Old Fort is displaced, let's invite them too." So, we invited the Old Fort families, and we had several that came that night, and they were very grateful for being able to come. So, it was a great night and a good community activity. Then, we had Red Ribbon Week and got to dress up, and so that was a good time for all. And then, our fourth graders, our fourth grade teachers are actually here. Y'all want to talk about that? I knew they wouldn't. I knew they wouldn't. But they had a mock election, and so their students were able to participate in a mock election and to be able to experience that. So they had a great time doing that and learning through that process. Then we hosted a Veterans Day program for our veterans, and all students performed. So each grade level took a role, and they either sang a song, or read a poem, or recited a poem. They had memorized. And they, it was a great event for all of our veterans, so we had a good time doing that. And then Family Thanksgiving Meal, of course, all of our schools hosted that. Our cafeteria fed 616 individuals that day. And there were other family members that came through and didn't eat, and then students who brought their lunchboxes. So we were very busy that day. But our staff, I was very proud of them, and they kept trucking with a smile. So we had a great time hosting our families that day. Breakfast with books and hubulation, this is like a rite of passage at Glenwood. Ms. Daddell's shaking her head over there. It is a longstanding tradition. They've had Who Day for many, many years. And so we are grateful to be able to continue that legacy. And so in the morning that day, our parents come, and they get to come and eat breakfast with our students, and they get, all students get a book. And then later that day, we host our Whoville program performed by our third graders. And so that's always a great time as well.
Okay, this time, item number 10 on the agenda is request to address a board public comment with a three-minute time limit. Let me go over some ground rules real quickly. There's nine requests tonight. I wanna say this, the folks from Old Fort, if you want to, eight of them are from Old Fort, and if you want to combine and have one speaker, we'll give you five minutes. If it's individual speakers, it's three minutes. It's totally up to you. I will say this, I hope you folks from Old Fort will hang around until Mr. Marsh gives you an update on what's going on up at Old Fort School, and he'll probably answer a whole lot of questions that you have, okay? So I'm gonna, the folks from Old Fort, is there anybody, does anybody wanna speak for the whole group, or do you have some that wanna combine into one, or?
We'll send individual.
Okay. All right. Public comment is a time for the board to hear from folks regarding issues related to the McDowell County School District. We ask that folks be mindful that we encourage families of small children to attend our meetings and watch our meetings online. We respect the right of speakers to give us their viewpoint on any issues related to the schools. However, we do not, we do balance those rights with the rights of families of young children when it comes to public comment. We ask that speakers make their points without making explicit comments. It is not appropriate or permissible for teachers in our schools to read explicit material to young children, and doing so in public comment is not appropriate either. In addition to public comment, the public is welcome to send the board emails through the superintendent. So at this time, number one's gonna be Susan, or wait a minute, Ms. Chavez, I guess, or, Susan, okay, I'm sorry. And Ms. Daddell's the timekeeper. Oh, yeah, yeah. Hold on just one minute. Okay. Now, this is for all nine speakers. I'll entertain a motion to allow them to speak.
I'll make the motion. We'll allow.
We have a motion by Mr. Suddles, a second by Mr. Schuford. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, thank you. Okay, ma'am.
Good evening, board and Dr. Gritt. I'm Susan Chavez, a fourth grade parent from Old Fort Elementary. Before I begin, I'll state, just as I did at the Old Fort Parent Meeting, I understand and respect the fact that we are in unprecedented times, and there was no playbook written for a natural disaster. However, I expect honesty, transparency, and empathy for what our staff and students have endured. To quote Dr. Gritt's comments at the Old Fort Elementary staff two weeks before the, or after the storm, "It is not that bad in Old Fort. We need to pull up our bootstraps and move on." In the parent meeting, Dr. Gritt significantly downplayed the amount of damage to the school and called it minor water damage to the interior, which made it appear to parents. The PG solution was temporary, and there was a possibility of being back at Old Fort post-holidays. As I saw later in the agenda, Mr. Chad Marsh will be providing an update on facilities. I commend you on this hire. Mr. Marsh, to fill this role, as I believe he will bring honesty, transparency, and quite frankly, get the work completed that has not been completed by his leadership for months past. You will from several concerned parents and a student representative for 23 pages of direct feedback from staff, parents, and students from Old Fort MPG. As one parent noted, let me remind you of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, which starts with basic needs of food, water, heat, progressing to safety, love, belonging, and self-actualization. There are four categories you're gonna hear discussed today. Facilities, Old Fort staff that don't have keys, safety and security. No heat was in our building a couple weeks ago. Parents were not notified, nor were kids sent home. Bathrooms, no bathrooms on the floor that some kids are kindly referred to as the dungeon. Classroom ratios and education, lack of concentration, distractions. Children only leave the room for recess in what's called a quasi-gym. Lunch is usually cold, sometimes missing components, no ability to purchase extras or substitute. Testing and grades, what accommodations will be made as it is unacceptable to hold our principal, our teachers, our administration, and our students accountable to the same standards considering an environment and conditions, 63-plus kids in one room. Love and belonging, Old Fort has simply worn out its welcome at PG by students and staff. Bathrooms are being blocked by PG students not allowing Old Fort in. Opportunities are not equal amongst students, dances, field trips, et cetera. I'm gonna stop there and employ you to listen to the real facts versus the fake reality of everything is great. That is being fed to the media and storyline politics. Our children, teachers, and administrators deserve better. Dr. Gritt, when asked by sit representatives, continued to state, "Doors and floors are the key. Heat has been restored." As one parent provided this fact, "From September, does it really take 11 months to new floors, considering it only took 13 months to build the Empire State Building?" Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mindy Duncan.
As discussed, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, which states, or starts with basic food, water, heat, I'll be addressing the facilities category. Per the NC Admin Code 8.1343, classroom facilities, a classroom in which a course is provided shall, one, accommodate all enrolled students, two, be equipped with student desks, work tables with chairs, and other seatings having a surface on which students can write, three, have light, heat, cooling, ventilation, and as needed, a public address system, and four, be free from distractions that would disrupt class sessions. The following quotes are feedback from parents and staff related to the facilities categories of concerns. Keys to the building, staff do not have keys for lockdown. How is this safe or secure? Heat issues with no communication. Heat issues within the building, on January 8th and 9th, my son came home and said that there was no heat in his part of the building. He worked all day in a winter coat, and the parents were not notified of this situation. There have been days with no heat in the old building at the school, and no parents were notified, and kids were not sent home. Heaters were not placed in the basement at all. Electrical heaters were supposedly placed by Dr. Gritt himself into pre-K classrooms, where kids could access the heaters. Is it this a code issue? Bathroom issues, there is no bathroom quickly available in the basement floor of the old school building. They have to go upstairs. Bathrooms not on the same floor may seem as a minor inconvenience, but it is relevant when personally I know five-plus kids whose parents have received letters home or stating that their kids are having excessive bathroom times. Windows and no egresses, classrooms have no windows in the areas referred to as the dungeon. Is this legal? And drop-offs, the drop-off in the mornings are infuriating. I work in Black Mountain, so the days my wife has to work MPG, I have to go to PG, back to Black Mountain. Reasons being, they're never opening the school doors at 7:15. It's always 7:20 or later, with the last week before the storm being one day by 7:25. I actually called the school and asked about this, and was told that they are never later than 7:20, which is a flat-out lie. But instead of causing a confrontation, I let it go. I still think in the back of my mind, though, what if my kids were late to school every day? I guarantee someone would be asking questions then. The area where preschool is dropped off is a nightmare, especially if you drive a larger vehicle. The circle is too small and hard to avoid hitting other cars unless you wanna damage your tires by driving over the curb. Not to mention that the ice was still a hazard this morning, as it wasn't clearly total, or cleared totally from the parking lot, and teachers and children could have fallen. Also, the bushes lining the area where we drop off preschool scratches the vehicles that could be trimmed back.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Ms. Price, Beth Price.
Hello, my name is Beth Price. I am a former instructional assistant at Old Fort Elementary, and I'm a parent to two children currently enrolled at Old Fort, one who has been withdrawn because the facilities were inadequate. I will be addressing the classroom education category. Per the NC Admin Code 8.1343, classroom facilities, a reminder that the fourth element is free from distractions. The following quotes are feedback from parents and staff related to the classroom education category of concerns. It's like a makeshift juvenile kids' center. The Old Fort kiddos are not allowed to go to the cafeteria, and they can't move out of their crowded rooms all day except for recess. Classes are crowded and loud. Kids cannot concentrate. Kids in the basement, known as the dungeon, can hear everything above them, chairs screeching, doors slamming, and so on. Food comes down to the kids, and it is cold. They are not allowed to go to the cafeteria. They are stuck in the classroom, eating whatever comes, and not where they can buy snacks or have something switched out if need be. One day, a fifth-grade child was given a scoop of salsa for a lunch. That's unacceptable. The only time they leave their room is to walk to recess. Everything, including STEM and art, is in the room, with two things going on at the same time. Kids' grades are dropping, and so is the morale. Routines of all students have been disrupted, including PG. There is no normalcy. Since the transition, my son cannot leave his room unless he goes to recess or PE. He cannot even eat in a lunchroom setting. My son's grades have dropped because he says it's so loud above him, he cannot concentrate. This is in no way reflective of his teachers. They are doing the best they can, considering the circumstances. From what I'm gathering from my child is they eat lunch in their room, have STEM and art in their classrooms. I understand that the space is limited, but maybe alternating the PG kids with our OFE kids would be helpful. It makes, helps make their day go by faster when they get to leave the classroom. They are not given time to simply eat lunch in a cafeteria and are forced to eat in their classrooms. Only part of the kids are allowed to use the playground for recess. Our children are being cramped into less than 10 classrooms for the entire population of the school. No other children in McDowell County are facing these conditions, but yet ours are expected to learn and test to the same standards as every other student. She's in the second grade, and in the media center with 60 other students. I worry she isn't getting the best education that could be provided if she was in a regular classroom. It's hard to form a safe environment with that many children. There are kids walking by and windows they look out of, and it distracts them. She tells me there are multiple interruptions during learning time, and it is hard to focus. My daughter was so excited to get back to school on the first day, so drop-off went smoothly. But pickup was a different story. She was understandably overwhelmed.
Ms. Nasworth.
My name is Mara Nasworth, and I'm a grandmother of two kids at Old Fort Elementary. I will continue addressing the classroom education category, as this has had a significant impact on our staff and children. The following quotes continue feedback from parents, staff, related to classroom education category of concerns. As a parent, I do not want to hear the words "kids are resilient" come out of the mouth of any school administrator again. Our fourth graders were COVID kindergartners. The fifth graders lived through COVID shutdown as well. Yes, our kids are resilient, but they deserve better. They're being treated like second-class citizens due to something out of their control. The cafeteria is a major concern and issue because our students frequently don't receive all the components of the school lunch meal due to inadequate space to cook and store food for two schools. The kitchen is extremely small and cannot accommodate such high amount of food for both schools. When you have 42 kindergarten students in a single classroom, that's not okay. That's not conducive to learning. They have no center. For 10 playtime, they are crammed into a small classroom and expect to stay there seven hours. First grade is crammed into two classrooms, and one classroom was divided and split up. They need normalcy. They need organization. They need their safe place. Classrooms don't even have enough room for bookshelves, or the teachers don't even have desks due to limited space. I asked my son just the other day how often they play basketball, since this is all he thinks about, and he said they don't. He then tells me they don't get to play in the gym with basketball hoops. They were in a small, open room. I asked my daughter how things were going. She said terrible. She's having a really hard time focusing in class due to people next to her class screaming, which I assume may be where our Old Fort Elementary kids are playing. Be completely honest, I had considered multiple times relocating my son to another school. The amount of kids in the classroom is one of the greatest reasons, because my son has difficulties concentrating when there's a lot of commotion. I also do not see that it is fair that our children do not have the opportunity to visit the lunchroom, even if they were to eat lunch in the lunchroom. They still aren't having the opportunity to buy extras or snacks. My second-grade student is in the fifth. She says they are in the room that connects with the multimedia room. It's loud and hard to concentrate during tests and lessons. Classes are crowded, food comes down early, and it's cold. They're not allowed to go to the cafeteria. They have to eat breakfast and lunch at their desk. They don't get to, they only leave the room to walk to the playground. Grades are dropping, art, PE, STEM have been interrupted, and has to be in the same room where they're at all day. I hope all of this is taken into consideration at the end of the school year, because this hasn't been easy on anyone, especially the children.
Thank you. Clay Duncan.
Good evening, board. My name's Clay Duncan. My son's in third grade at Old Fort, and he's fourth-generation Old Fort. My grandma went to Old Fort in the '30s. So, you know, we go way back, but I'm gonna read some, I'll be addressing the love and belonging, best version of self-category, and here's some quotes from parents. They're gonna have to start talking me off an 18-story building if I had to stay there until the end of the school year. My mental health is suffering. My kid told me they don't want to live any longer if they had to continue to go to that school. I moved my kid the next week. After the first week, all the PG teachers and kids show that being uncomfortable is not okay, making Old Fort kids and staff feel unwanted. Old Fort kids were excited to learn of a dance, to later learn they were not invited. Old Fort kids, third, fourth, and fifth graders have been told by PG kids that they aren't wanted there and to go back to their own school. They didn't learn this on their own. Staff also seem to have problems with Old Fort being there as well. Rumors have definitely been spread about this far and wide. Our kids deserve better than what they've been forced into. The stresses of the storm, having to relocate due to home damage, and relying heavily on donation centers for everyday necessities. and relying heavily on donation centers for everyday necessities was especially hard. She is hopefully, hopefully being able to return to Old Ford before she has her fifth grade graduation, but we have discussed this and this is not likely. I am rushing and very stressed by the time I pull into the parking lot. I was hoping we'd move back into school by the new year. I feel the school board should have worked with the Y and C A program to accommodate our kids and parents much better than it was done. It feels like our children were shoved into a school that didn't want, that didn't want them there, including the staff. It definitely feels like this huge debacle. We'll definitely have my older kid, older child failing this year. Kids are called, the Old Ford kids by the PG kids, told to go back to their school. Kids and staff can tell they are unwanted. And me too. I used to go spend time with all the Old Ford kids, but I have, I have been not, I have not been down PG once. I used to go eat lunch with my son, but I just don't feel like I'm welcome down there anymore. So, I, I, I haven't been down there. I mean, they'd only have a cafeteria to go into anyhow to eat lunch. Are we truly putting our students first? Are we truly putting the mental health of the students and staff at Old Ford first? You continue to push our wonderful Old Ford administration and teachers, which they are. I, I personally say myself, Ms. Ward and all the teachers are a wonder.
Thank you, sir. John Michael Chavas.
My name is Matt Price. I'm a community pastor and a father of a fifth grader and a third grader at Old Ford. I want to read tonight several quotes from parents and students of our school. Our teachers and administration are fearful to speak up regarding issues or thoughts for fear of repercussions. Dr. Grit shut down their spokesperson during the storm and continues not to listen or give them the opportunity to speak, which sounds much like a dictatorship compared to, compared to leadership. The amount of gas and time it takes a kid to PG school is putting hardship on our family. We are driving a long way, especially for out, from outlying areas in Old Ford. Then we're having to drive a loop to enter the school from Lake, Lake Tahoma Road and then exit the same way. There has to be a better solution than taking these kids this far away from their homes. Nobody has been working at the other school. All work is stopped. No updates have been given to parents. Just saying they should be ready to go back in August, which at this point I'm becoming doubtful. If there was a problem, then parents need to be told. Administration needs to be open and honest and tell people so they can make the best decision for their families. PG is not the right choice for all kids. This is turning into a long-term problem and it's not set up and it's not setting up to be a good learning environment. If I had known this was really going to be and how long this is going to take, then my kid would not have been moved to another school or they would have moved to another school. The teachers are doing the best they can with what they have been given. There is no, there is no complaints about the teachers at all. Rumors have circled around regarding the return to school and nobody from the school board, the superintendent or administration have tried to update parents or quash any of the rumors. There's absolute silence from everyone. Parents are not updated on progress of Old Ford Elementary. All we know is that they are saying we are back in August. However, for several weeks, I've noticed nobody has been at the school working. This tells me that the school is either ready to go or finished and finished or the ball has been dropped and work is stopped. It has taken parents, forcing these meetings for the school superintendent to finally stop the silence and put out a midway report that still does not give concrete dates nor deadlines for completion. Schools in Asheville that went through the same rebuilding process went back to school on January the seventh. Maybe the rumors circulating are true that Dr. Grit is only focused on the money to be recovered, not the benefit of getting these kids back to where they need to be thriving. As parents, we have received zero communication to the updates of our school, the remediation plans, expedited return date. The only communication regarding this progress has been from, has been from school board and member social media and social media posts. Our children deserve better. They do not need fancy equipment or beautiful remodel this time. These repairs and remediation efforts can wait until they are out of school this summer. Ms. Ward voiced that the upstairs suffered no damage. Why could the kids not be moved back to the upstairs Old Ford mobile classrooms? Thank you.
Thank you. John Chavas.
Hi, my name is John Michael Travis. I am a fourth grade student at Old Ford Elementary. When asked how I feel about the transition, I simply say it is okay. The positive part is we have wonderful teachers who support us in getting to see my friends that go to PG from sports. But there are several things I will change. First, our class is basically in the basement and we get very distracted in class by kids above us getting up, hearing their chairs on the floors and door slams. Second, we are not allowed to eat in the cafeteria or talk to the other fourth grade classes during lunch. Third, my friends who play sports with me are nice to all of us, but several PG kids have been mean and blocked the bathrooms from us. Fourth, we have to have STEM and art in our, in our class. Next, we have PE to, we have to have PE in our, eh, on a marble floor and be more quiet than usual. With testing coming up, I am concerned about the distractions during test time and great, and my grades will suffer. I would, if, I would ask for your help today in getting us back to our school as soon as possible and most importantly, before testing occurs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Megan Bartlett.
Hi, my name is Megan Bartlett. What you just received is a packet of all of the feedback. So whenever you are hearing our parents' quotes, these are directly where they came from. They are anonymous and I left it that way. The recent delays in reopening Old Ford Elementary have raised significant concerns among parents, staff, and students. The slow progress has been attributed to various factors, including the need to ensure safety, heat issues, new doors, and laying flooring. However, the lack of transparent communication from the school system about the work being done has further intensified the frustration with the OFE community. One of the primary issues highlighted by parents and staff is the insufficient communication regarding the steps being taken to reopen OFE. Clearing consistent updates are essential to keep everyone informed and to build trust in the process. Unfortunately, the current communication strategy appears inadequate, leaving many individuals in the dark about the progress and plans for reopening as well as fueling false narratives. Another pressing concern is the absence of consolation with parents and staff about their feelings and opinions and on the conditions that they are facing. Engaging with them is crucial in understanding their perspectives and addressing their concerns effectively. It is important for the school system to actively seek feedback and involve parents and staff in decision-making processes to ensure that their voices are heard and their needs are met. Parents are experiencing a great deal of uncertainty and anxiety due to the lack of information and involvement. Many are worried about the safety of their children and the impact of the prolonged OFE closure on their education and well-being. By not consulting parents, the school system will alienate them and undermining their confidence in the measures being taken. Staff members, including teachers and support staff, are also affected by the lack of consultation. They are on the front lines and have valuable insights to the feasibility and effectiveness of the plans being developed. Without their input, the school system will miss critical considerations that could impact the success for reopening efforts. To address these concerns, the school system must take several proactive steps. Number one, improve communication. Establish regular updates to inform the community about the progress and challenges being faced in reopening OFE. This transparency will help build trust and reduce uncertainty. Number two, engage staff, parents, and students. Actively seek their feedback from parents and staff through surveys, forums, meetings. However, this involvement will ensure that their concerns are being heard and addressed. Number three, develop a clear plan. Outline a detailed plan for reopening that includes timelines, safety measures, and contingency plans. This clarity will help manage expectations and provide a roadmap for moving forward. By taking these steps, the school system can foster a collaborative approach to reopening OFE and ensuring that the needs and concerns of the entire OFE community are considered and addressed. This will not only help in facilitating a smoother reopening process, but also in rebuilding the trust and confidence of parents, staff, and students. In closing, please do the right thing. Give PG back their home and bring OFE home.
Thank you, ma'am. Did I miss anybody from Old Ford by chance? Appreciate the comments. Mr. Sinclair.
Hi, everybody. My name's Ron Sinclair. My wife and I have been residents of the Glenwood area of McDowell County since nineteen eighty. For most of those years, I've worked in music ministry within the United Methodist Church. I appreciate this opportunity to address the board. According to North Carolina Board of Education twenty-three twenty-four report, only two of our fifteen schools are given an A rating. No Bs, ten Cs, three Ds. Only one-third met growth goals and forty percent failed to do so. Both middle schools received a D. The high-performing schools are the Academy for Innovation and the Early College Program. Why the disparities? English proficiency is seventeen point nine percent in our county versus a state average of twenty-seven point three percent. Our graduation rate is only eighty-five point two percent, which is the lowest in western North Carolina. ACT scores of nineteen are above for only thirty-four point eight percent of our students versus forty point two for the state. ACT work scores forty-five point one percent versus sixty percent for the rest of the state. During the recent school shooting hoax, teachers were required to secure outside doors that remain open at all times by using an Allen wrench to lock them after being given an alert, unnecessarily exposing them to danger or even death. There is chaos in DC. Last week's announcement that all grant payments would be paused surely had to create a crisis in our Head Start program since one hundred percent of the funding for Head Start is from federal and state grants. What happens if the Department of Education is abolished? What contingencies are you prepared to take if funding is greatly reduced or eliminated? Are you already communicating your concerns to Chuck Edwards, Tom Tillis, Ted Budd, and even the president himself? Have you asked the county commission to submit a petition to these elected officials asking for protection for these funds designed to help our children? Have you prepared or submitted a petition to these representatives yourselves? What actions are you taking now to calm the waters for both students and faculty during the chaos? There's a real fear in our vibrant Latino community. Fears of ICE raids and demonization of brown and black people has increased incidents of taunting and confrontation in each of our schools and community. The same atmosphere has increased tensions and fear in our LGBTQ community. What are you doing to minimize these tensions? I've got a lot more and I'll be happy to send them to you by email. So I'm gonna close with this. In the midst of these pressing issues and others, you've spent the first ninety days of your term addressing two primary issues. Opening board meetings with prayer and removal of books from the school libraries. Both priorities are an expression of political optics that have no effect on the educational outcomes of our students. If any of us wishes to pray in any setting privately, I was taught when I entered ministry that every thought is a prayer because God hears it.
Thank you, sir. Unfinished business, facilities update, Mr. Chad Marsh.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Grit, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chad Marsh and I will be providing the operations and auxiliary services and athletics update. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, you know that what I'm providing you is nothing different than what I have done in the four weeks that I have been on board and it's what I will continue to do throughout my tenure. I believe you all have provided a snapshot of what I'll be providing tonight. Specifically, I'll talk about some of the, the work that I observe throughout the directorate. Mr. Garrett Berryhill and I have been conducting some internal safety reviews of all of our facilities. This is typically in keeping with a safety walkthrough that I have been doing with all of our principals and I have a few more to finish up. But I walk with each of our principals and discuss their feelings and their SRO's recommendations, make that information part of a spreadsheet that I come back to and address and will continue to address. Now surveillance upgrades have been made and we will give McDowell County Schools the capability to observe real time, i.e. the active shooter scenario that we went through a couple of weeks ago or review stored footage, for example, like for a bus-related incident. Cameras have been installed at the Summit Academy in the bus garage. An IT staff has worked on our internal firewall to allow low-cost, commercial, off-the-shelf camera options to be installed and connected to our servers. The need for additional cameras has been identified and they will be procured and installed. Transportation, I'm happy to announce that this week is National Bus Drivers Appreciation Week and in keeping with much of what was discussed tonight with respect to Maslow's hierarchy, I would say that if kids don't get to school, they don't get educated. In this particular instance, that's, that's pretty important. So we want to make sure they get there and appreciate all those men and women who choose to hop in a yellow school bus and bring those babies to us. Mr. Will Thomas and his staff have placed four new buses in our fleet over the last two weeks. Three have been assigned very intentionally to Old Ford Elementary School and one was assigned to North Cove Elementary School. These are wonderful new assets and we are proud to deliver them to our schools. Mr. Thomas has also reported that currently, and just kind of digest this number for, for a second if you will, that our yellow bus fleet is comprised of sixty buses that run sixty routes. And that equates to approximately thirty-six hundred miles traveled each day here in McDowell County with our yellow buses. So there's a lot going on. And as we all know and has been brought up tonight, there are some challenges that DOT and our counties have been facing with respect to some of the roadways that are still not open or unsafe to travel. And that's been a challenge that we continue to address. Child nutrition, Mr. Haynes and his staff have worked hard to flex and to accommodate the requirements for more feeding of the children at Old Ford Elementary School who are now at Pleasant Gardens. These meals are prepared on-site and then they are packaged in what he calls to-go boxes and they're delivered daily to those who are at PG Baptist in the classrooms. It's typically pre-K we have over right now. And of those, a hundred and seventy-five breakfast meals and two hundred lunches get rolled out in carts every day. And approximately twenty of each meal is packaged and delivered to those pre-K students. The students housed in the mobile classrooms walk into the media center each day and are served breakfast and lunch there. Mr. Haynes and his staff have prepared and served nearly five hundred thousand meals this school year. In athletics, we've had some wonderful wins this year for our young student athletes and I think it's worth talking about. Before I do, I'll mention specifically that the position of McDowell High School's head football coach and director of district football operations has been advertised now for approximately twenty-seven days. We have adopted a formalized plan of action and milestones and will require the members of the hiring committee as well as each candidate to sign a non-disclosure agreement that our attorneys have given their blessing to. This will happen prior to the interviews. Thus far, we have eighteen applications. The position will remain open until February the fourteenth, at which point we will continue with the process of selection and make a recommendation to the superintendent. The batting cage to the MHS softball field was damaged after a tree fell during a lean and I was able to plead with a local fencing contractor to get bids into our insurance adjuster and get work started on that by Saturday, this past Saturday. There are some great things going on in our winter sports in McDowell County school systems. Specifically, our Lady Titans are undefeated and they're now ranked as the number one four-A basketball team in the state. The boys are nineteen and two and they have their eyes set on finishing strong and making the postseason. MHS wrestlers had an unprecedented year, which was led by Coach Chad Davis, who was selected as coach of the year for the MAC and Hayden Haynes, who was selected as the male wrestler of the year. And twelve, that's twelve young men and two young ladies made it to their individual weight class finals in five class finals, and five came away with conference champs. And I don't know about you, but I love the fact that our young ladies are being recognized and have the opportunity to wrestle. I think it's wonderful. After winning the conference tournament, the Titan team made it to the regional dual meet, and next up for the wrestlers, they will compete in the regional individual event starting this Friday at Olympic High School in Charlotte. West McDowell Middle School wrestlers finished an undefeated season, winning both the regular season and conference tournament, and this is eight years in a row now for the Spartan wrestlers. Spring sports start this week, and North Carolina High School Athletic Association has set the 12th as the first official day for practices. Under our auxiliary services, Mr. Garvin Trinks announced his plans to retire last week, and his hard work and 45 years of service are appreciated. His level of knowledge of our facilities and systems will be sorely missed. The director's position has been advertised, and we will begin to review applications as they are received. Staff and I are working to review proposals and to approve the work that had previously been identified to be accomplished under the Safe Schools Grant. This work includes window tenting of facilities that have windows in their ground-floor level classrooms, multipurpose rooms, as well as the enhancing of the entryway security systems and the procurement installation of video surveillance systems. Staff and I are working to identify and remediate areas that require paint to increase curb-to-stair visibility. This has already occurred at McDowell High School and at West McDowell Middle School, and I think Mr. Berryhill has up there on the, through some slides, this is an example of the tenting that has occurred at Marion Elementary School. We have worked to procure Knox boxes for all 22 of our McDowell County Schools' facilities. These will be installed on the exterior of each facility and allow law enforcement, firefighters, and emergency personnel to gain access to the facilities in emergent or after-hours situations. I deem this to be critical. I'm meeting with each of our, again, as I stated earlier, the rest of our principals to continue the tours and to continue to populate my spreadsheet. Pleasant Gardens Elementary, we heard much tonight about the PG and Old Fort Elementary School students that are sharing spaces, but I'm happy to report that progress has been made over the last couple of weeks that I've been on board. PG Baptist, we have a lease there for some students. Temporary classroom was set on-site where the tennis courts were that is adjacent to Highway 70. The classrooms are ADA-accessible. They've had plumbing installed or electric wired, and have HVAC systems that support the overall spaces. And they're nuts and nice with any classroom I ever attended as a student. A plan to assess the wear from nearly twice the number of students and faculty on the school is something that the superintendent and I have had a discussion about, and we plan on putting into play. This will need to be done at that school, just like every other system that we have a tremendous amount of foot traffic on. For Old Fort, much of what I present to you tonight was discussing the mid-year, or it was touted as the mid-year that I presented to the superintendent, and he gives him to the board. I can tell you, having gone there almost twice a week for the time that I've been here, in some cases, three and four, I do not get there every day. I can tell you that work is ongoing. Belfour has been on-site, and they have had individuals working in the schools. The interior of the school has had initial cleaning. It's free of mud and silt. Power panel's been inspected and operational. Interior lighting, electrical outlets have been inspected and restored. The HVA systems that were not on the exterior of the building have been replaced or cleaned, inspected, and are operating as designed. The building has been acclimatized. If you walk around in a jacket in there, you'll have to take it off. There were 13 mini-split units around the exterior of the building on ground level, and all of those are going to have to be replaced or going to require considerable mechanical work. The flooring, all of the carpet and luxury vinyl tile has been removed from the building, or the first floor of the building. Terrazzo floor's been covered. If you walk in there, you'll see it's covered with paper for the protection of the material, and it'll be cleaned before opening back up. The subfloor underneath the damaged floor has all been scraped and cleaned, and here's some pictures. This is in Mrs. Ward's office area there. Go back up to the top. Thank you. So this is, this was some of the things that folks walked into the first day. As you can see, it was awful, but then as work began to progress, this, again, all these pictures I have taken, with the exception of the mud picture, all these other pictures I have taken, so this work has occurred in the four weeks that I've been on board. So go down, Mr. Berryhill. So you can see on the first one on the left, there was remediation that occurred on the drywall. That shows you, and again, you'll see it in another picture in a moment, but that shows you that drywall was removed, any insulation that's underneath was removed to prevent moisture wicking, at which point that was given time to dry out when the building was acclimatized. After that point, we brought it back to end, you put new drywall on. Now what you're seeing there is mud and tape by the contractors, and then on the right, you see a fresh coat of paint. So that's an example of the walls that I just spoke about. But go down, see if you can find, there are my gym pictures. So yeah, so as you can see, the original, the gym floor was completely lost. And so what had to occur was a total removal, base trim and floor was all removed, the subfloor was cleaned and prepped, and then a new gym floor is being installed, painted, and sealed. And so the last, go down, Garrett. So that picture is today, when I walked into the facility. So you can see a little bit of a striped line on the left, so that's the actual coat of seal going down. The first coat will be, had been totally applied by close of business today, and contract anticipates coming in either today or tomorrow, or tomorrow, the next day they'd come in to finish that coat of seal. The arrowhead logo that has combined with the eagle there was off-center. Staff identified it, required the contractor to pull it up, and so that actually has been replaced twice now. So there is some oversight occurring in the spaces as well. Doors, there was a significant amount of doors that were damaged in the space, and so if you walked through the entire school on the ground level, there was over 60 doors that had to be removed because they are wooden composite, and the water got underneath them, and it has, they began to swell, and so they were removed. Those doors, we have been told, have an approximate lead time of 10 weeks, and it's when they get there, they're going to have to be identified because certain doors go, swing certain ways, and they don't have to be set out. They'll have to have hardware installed on them, and they don't have to be installed. So that process will have to be addressed once they get there. Happy to report that over the weekend, I worked with and spoke with contractors from Ash Brit Management, who represent, who are working with the Army Corps of Engineers, who have, I released a contract this morning for them to be able to work on-site, and they will be continuing with remediation on the banks of Mill Creek, and that includes removal of debris, trash, and other things. And if you go back, Garrett, Garrett, can we go down? So here again, let me stop, go back right there. So this is what it was supposed to look like. This shows remediation. Continue on, please. So then you can see the different phases of remediation that occurred. Again, this is in Mrs. Ward's office space. Next slide, please. So this is showing some of, each one of the counter spaces in the building. So the reason that there's a picture of counters there is because all of the counters sit on a frame. They sit on a two-by-four frame, and all of the frames that hold those counters had to be taken out because all of them had significant water damage. And so each one of the classes that have any kind of counter system had to be set back on a brand-new frame. There's a gentleman there working hard in one of the classrooms. Continue on, please. This shows you today that base trim has been added now. So you walk into the main hallway just outside of gymnasium, leading into the office space, the process of going in and scraping off the glue that was there, and then adding the new base trim is ongoing. Continue on, please. This is some of the same overheads that we had before. When I was the Director of Parks and Recreation, I was very proud of our folks diving in there with some of the folks from the community to clean those parking lots, and it's continued to be an ongoing effort. There's a great deal of silt that has to be remediated back there. Continue on, please. So I took this picture today because I was very happy that over the last couple of weeks, some of the school, some of the classrooms are continuing to have flooring added to them. No, they do not have base trim to them, but when I walked out of that building today at approximately 2:30, there was two classrooms that did not have LVT flooring in them, and there is the office space in main hallway that did not have LVT flooring in them. But this is the last two classes on the main wing, and so if you look, that classroom there on the left-hand side, that shows you looking down into Mill Creek. The one on the right-hand side is its partner across the hallway, and it shows you looking into the parking lot. Scroll down, please, Mr. Berryhill. That is what is in the backyard. That is what's between that classroom and Mill Creek and the factory that sits on the hill. There's a tremendous amount of remediation that has to happen there that is beyond the scope of McDowell County schools. We don't have a license or the equipment or the ability to be able to do that. That has to be contracted out to the Army Corps of Engineers, and through FEMA, Ash Brit will have to do that. We cannot allow students back into that building until we are sure that what they're going to breathe when they walk out that door is safe. We owe it to those kids to make sure of that. Remediation has to take place up against the building, and anybody who's ever owned a house or done work around a building knows you cannot pick a big piece of equipment and stick it up against a building because you will damage the foundation. So a lot of that's going to have to be done by hand. Mr. Chairman, I present my report in what I consider to be an unbiased and factual matter, sir, and that's the way I work as long as I'm here.
Does anybody from the board have anything for Mr. Marsh?
Yes, I have one quick question. First, I want to tell you how much I appreciate your report that you've sent out weekly to us. It shows that you've put a lot of time and dedication to your position. I know you've only been here three to four weeks, and you have hit the ground running. The one thing that I've had a call on is the sewer system for Old Fort. The city, I've heard all different types of rumors about that. Do you have any?
Well, so, so thank you, Mr. Barxel, for the comments and the questions. And the superintendent and I were discussing, kind of had a brainstorm session, I think it was two weeks or so ago, and one of the concerns we had was having worked at DOC and up in Old Fort. And again, I'm not with the town of Old Fort, so I'll provide the information that I have, was that that treatment plant took a hard hit. As I understand, after talking with some emergency professionals, it was reopened, but there were some challenges that had it close again in the last two weeks. And so I don't, I could put a call in today to the town, and once I have information, I'll provide it to Dr. Grit to get it to you, but that's definitely something that I'm concerned about because I think one of the, one of the worst things that could happen, and this is my opinion and my opinion only, is to send these children who have already been upended and dislocated from their normal life into a school that is either not safe or not ready to house them. And so that is something that, all that wastewater treatment will have to be addressed, and we'll have to have some kind of assurance that it can hold everything that that school's going to put into it. So I'll continue to get an update. Again, that is not representation of Old Fort, the town, but that was the last bit of information I have from an emergency professional.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. McGann, is this Old Fort representative? Do you have anything?
Thank you for your hard work. I appreciate the effort you put into this. I know what that represents, and this is just something that we've got to get right for the kids, especially when it comes from a standpoint of safety. And if there's anything else that can be done, we trust you, the man, to figure that out, but appreciate what you've done. That's all I've got.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Marsh, so as far as outside contractors, and I know you've been working with them in your time here, from this point on, we will see a lot of outside contractors there, correct, that are doing the work?
You mean exterior outside, sir? Or are you talking about from out of the county? What are you talking about?
Both, just both, because I know the frustrations of the people here, because I travel interstate 40 a lot, and there were days when I was a little frustrated.
Yes, sir.
And I know you've just gotten here recently.
Yes, sir.
And I applaud you for all that you've done already. There was, absolutely. There were some pictures on there that I saw that you took, that when I took the walk around, they looked real similar. So it made me wonder what's getting, what was getting done. I felt like there were things that were getting done, but we had some comments made to previous board members that there would be outside contractors on-site all the time and not just our maintenance people trying to get this done. And sometimes it felt a little frustrating that that wasn't happening, but now I'm glad to see that you're on board with that. You know, I need to apologize to you if I had any, any part in the delay of you getting hired. I wish that I would have not done that unless you got hired a little quicker on this point right here. So I apologize to you. We should have pushed you a little quicker. But again, great work. Please keep it up. I know the folks of Old Fort really would appreciate that, and maybe we can get some answers, you know, later on.
Thanks, sir. And so all I can say, Mr. Settles, is that no more from the time I leave here tonight than when I walked in here, am I going to be any more committed to doing it, sir. There is work that needs to get done there, but I also, again, I cannot stress the importance of making sure we get it right. And I don't know what that looks like, but sir, I will continue to provide information to this board and Dr. Grit as best I know how. It'll always be factual. If I mess up, I'll be the first to own it, but I can tell you that from what I've seen in there, I have not seen any more than eight contractors at one time in the building, but I have seen work there in the time that I've been there. I've seen people working in remediation in the back, but you know, it seemed like when I spoke with Ash Brit Saturday night, Sunday after church, and then again this morning, that they were committed to getting there in a short timeframe. He said mobilization was going to take approximately a week. Their plan was to put in what he called a mat down on the ground, and then they were going to lay these items that they were pulling off of the riverbank and out of the river on this mat, and that was going to be itemized and taken off-site. That has to happen as we move forward. If we don't, if we track some of that into the building, sir, I'm concerned about how it's going to go, but as far as remediation work in there, and one thing I do want to mention as well that I left, I don't know if I put in my report or that I left out, there's been a discussion, it's already occurred with Dr. Grit, myself, and Mr. Trinks about repainting the school. And while that might not, you know, people say, well, we don't need new paint. I understand that, but I can't, other than just wiping down the wall, I'd like to know that what we're giving to these kids is a good product that they can take pride in, that they can walk in and feel good about what they're doing. And so it's, there's a type of detail, sir, that we're trying to address to bring to the front. And Mr. Settles, I don't feel like you or any other member of the board owes me an apology. This is not personal. This is professional, and we're going to get it done.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you.
I have one more question. Is it difficult now in locating contractors? Is that some of the delay?
So, so Mr. Barxel, that's a great point, and as we all know in this room, we were not the only town, school, individuals hit by Hurricane Hone. And so the answer is yes, it is difficult. But it's, what is also, again, it doesn't mean that it's an incorrect process, but there is a process that we must follow when going out and hiring a contractor, whether it be through our insurance company or through FEMA, and that process has to be used. If we don't, we run the risk of being left with a bill that I, as a taxpayer, nor you or anybody else in this room, want to feel. So we're trying to go through this methodically. You can't just pick Chad Marsh because he owns a truck and he's got a U-Haul and a Baco, and he's a good old boy. There is a process that has to be followed, and so that's what we're trying to adhere to. But yes, sir, they're not just waiting around on us to throw them out there. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just real quick, I appreciate you putting Chad on after the citizen comment because it really serves to answer questions, and I've previously voiced just a concern that sometimes people come in and leave, and there's no response back. You know, we're quiet, and we don't, we don't respond, but I appreciate Mr. Marsh being right up against this so that people can hear, and if there's still complaints, then register, register those for sure, but I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. And I debated on whether to say this or not, and Mrs. Chavez, I hope you don't mind, but I, I had a private conversation with Mrs. Chavez on Saturday evening. It was very late, so I apologize. I'm a night owl. We actually talked on the phone because she had some concerns. I am, I'm not Dr. Grit, but I am his representative and your representative and their representative, and I'm going to try to get it right. And what I appreciate about our conversation was it was respectful, it was thoughtful, it was considerate, and I felt like when we got off the phone, I didn't have all the answers that she wanted, but I think what I provided her with was the truth as I saw it, and so again, I don't, you know, I know what this looks like, and there's a lot of emotions going on, but I just want to say in front of this board and everybody in this room, I don't know if you paid attention to anything that Sheriff Buchanan said tonight, but I want to stress this. As a military, as a retired military officer, my mind's geared a little differently. When we got the call on the day that there was an active shooter, Dr. Grit said, we've got to go, and we hopped in the truck and went up the road. There was no way I was going to sit in that parking lot with a devil inside with our babies. There wasn't a discussion, there wasn't, you got my back, hey, you going to do this with me? But as I, as I walked up those stairs and went in the front door of that building, Dr. Tracy Grit was right beside me. So I, I don't know, and he's his own man, he can talk to you about whatever, but I'm telling you, as a taxpayer, as a father, as a husband, that's exactly what I want the superintendent to do. So I know that there has been a gap that's pointed out, and it does not matter what was, it matters what is and what's going forward, and I believe that we will get there as long as we continue to be everything that Susan Chavez and I were on the phone. And if I'm not doing the job, find somebody else to do it. We will do it, and we'll do it right, and we'll do it together, and we'll do exactly what McDowell County has always done, we'll stand by each other. And I would just ask that everybody in this room and whoever's watching this, just remember, the day after the hurricane, we didn't care any- day after the hurricane, we didn't carry anything about where you were from, or where you went to, or what, what money you had in your pocket, or what church you attended. All we carried was, is, "Do you need somebody? Do you need some help? Have you got water? Have you got power? Are your kids eating?" That's what I saw from McDowell County. That's why I moved my wife and children back here. And that's why, as long as I'm doing this job, I'm gonna do it to the best of my ability until I can't, and then you find somebody else.
Thanks, Chad.
Mr. Marsh, one, one quick question for the folks here. Are we still on schedule as far as you know?
Sir, in my professional opinion, I see no reason to believe that those children will not be attending school in there this next upcoming year. I cannot look you in the eye and tell you that everything that needs to get accomplished will happen in time to allow them to enter that school building before this calendar year's, or fifth, uh, calendar school year, let me be clear.
Yes, sir.
But I do believe when August of twenty-five rolls around, and the calendar's gonna be talked about, that that school, barring something unforeseen that everybody will be informed of, we will be able to go to school in O'Fort this upcoming year.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to commend Mr. Settles for his comments. It takes much a man to say that, and I appreciate that. Does anybody have anything else for Chad?
Thank you, sir.
Or Mr. Marsh?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. I appreciate that. Just a few things moving forward, and if you don't mind, I'll just stay here so we can move on with the night. We, we had a audit that was presented to the Finance Committee just this past week. I mentioned to you that the audit was a glowing report. Ms. Rampy and her team do a fantastic job. One of those things we need to do is receive that audit, and, and that is something that does require a vote. I know that the audit has been placed here for you guys to see in a bound copy for the board members who are not part of the Finance Committee. But I would also like to invite Mr. Shuford, if you'd like to say a few words about the audit report that we received.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Grit. Finance Committee met on February sixth with the Accounting Group of Boggs, Crump, and Brown, and they were represented by Mr. Boggs and Mr. Brown. Fortunately, our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Rampy couldn't be here tonight. She had a four o'clock meeting this evening in Greensboro and couldn't make it back for this, but offered to be here. We, we didn't ask her to do that. But some, some comments from the audit. The Finance Department should be commended for continuing to develop and implement audit procedures for individual schools and Head Start, and financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. There wasn't out of we had to address. And also, it was noted that our fund balance was in such great shape and so much better than most in our district. And the wise use of the funds available and exemplary job utilization of funds available by Ms. Rampy and Ms. Hamby was also noted. And we certainly give our full recommendation that we receive the audit as, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford. It would be my recommendation for the board, if there, if there are no further questions specifically on this, that we receive the audit based on the recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Okay, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion for anybody that'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shuford, who's the Chairman of the Finance Committee, and Mr. Settles, who's also on the Finance Committee. And is there any further discussion on acceptance of the McDowell County Schools Audit Report? Having no further discussion, all those in favor of the audit report signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Mr. Greg Hughes, who will be presenting our calendars for a first read. Also want to point out, Mr. Allison is part of the Calendar Committee. He's here with us tonight as well. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Dr. Grit, members of the board. It's good to see everybody tonight. Here, you have East, um, let's do Early College first, and then we'll do Eastfield, and then the traditional Latin. So, first reading of the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendars for next year. The first one we're gonna look at is gonna be the Early College and MAI calendar. Again, this one goes right along with the Community College calendar. You can see they start their workdays on August the fourth and work their way through their first semester. I believe that ends on December, whatever that day is. I can't even see it. I need to give me some glasses. I think it's the nineteenth. That's gonna be eighty-nine days in the first semester. They continue on. Everything starts lining up. Well, not, not with their calendar. When they start back on sixth of January, that will begin their second semester of both MBI and MBC. And so, from that point on, they'll finish their second semester ending before Memorial Day in, in April the twentieth, give or take, a day or two on that. So, that's, that's our Early College MAI calendar. Again, the, the rules for their calendar are a little bit different. They can go right with the Community College. So, let's go ahead and flip to the Eastfield calendar, please. Eastfield calendar, also a little bit different. The traditional forty-five, fifteen that they've had there for years. And you can see that they start on July the tenth, and that's a quick turnaround. They've done it, like I said, for years and years. You can see right there in August, those three workdays they got thrown in there, that is when the traditional calendars and everybody starts back up, all the professional development days that go along with the traditional calendar at that time. Their first break, early September. Nice three weeks, great time to go to Big Beach or Disney, places like that. Picking back up on October the seventh. And again, their first semester also ends on the sixteenth of December. That is ninety days for them. That's their three-week break. They pick back up on the sixth. Everybody, when you, we get to the traditional calendar, will pick up on the sixth. Their final, that third nine weeks will end with a teacher workday on March the thirteenth, and then that's gonna orient with all the other calendars, with the traditional calendar, where everybody's gonna end on June the fifth. So, there's their Eastfield calendar. Again, rules for forty-five, fifteen aren't like they are for the traditional calendar. So, Garrett, if you would, let's go ahead and go to the traditional one real quick. One thing I want to point out with all the calendars, you have to have two hundred and fifteen days for staff, two hundred, two hundred and fifteen working days. Those, you'll find that on the lower right-hand corner of your copies for each, each calendar. It's gonna tell you the number of workdays, total number of days, and, and things like that. In that first blue day, for the traditional calendar right now, is the fourteenth. That is day one of those two fifteen. August the sixth, or, sorry, for the Early College is the fourth. For Eastfield, it's July the seventh. That is day one of those two fifteen. So, focusing on the traditional calendar right now, since there are rules in play for the traditional calendar, just so that everybody knows, can't start earlier than Monday, closest to August the twenty-sixth. You can't end any later than the Friday, closest to June eleventh. So, you've already got restraints right there just to start. You've got from here to here, and that's it. That's the way the traditional calendar works. You gotta have a hundred and eighty-five days or a thousand and twenty-five hours. And again, when we get, you look at your totals at the bottom, it'll tell you we're at about a thousand and sixty-two hours. We're not at one eighty-five days, we're at one seventy-nine. We're, we're, I think, I think a thousand and sixty-two, yeah, hours. So, and, and always an interesting one. I always used to do this when I was a principal, and I always asked the kids, "What day are, can you not miss? Do you have to be out of school?" And it's always, "Christmas!" And, "No, it's not." "Easter!" "No, it's Veterans Day." That's the day that you have to be out of school, per the law in North Carolina. So, nice little bit of trivia that I always enjoyed pulling with the kids. So, you have several workdays to start. Again, you see August eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. Those are the PD days that you saw with Early College and Eastfield all have out. Those are countywide PD days. Running through September, have the September first, we're in, in for a week, and we have September the first for Labor Day. Picking through October, that twenty-fourth is the end of the first nine weeks. You can see that we have Veterans Day on the eleventh of November, the traditional three-day Halloween, or Halloween. Could be Halloween sometimes, I guess. The traditional three-day Thanksgiving break. And, and look real close, that's only day seventy-nine there. The committee, when the committee got together, and you've seen several of the committee this evening with the teachers that were here, the committee got together and talking with the high school folks, they said they did not want to end their semester like they did this year at the end of December and get their testing done. So, our semester will end on January, I believe that's the sixteenth. Your first round of fall testing will happen that week, the twelfth through the sixteenth. You do have MLK on the nineteenth, and you see a workday thrown in there. When I first started, it was two workdays to get all, all McDowell High School up and going with their second semester. That's, that's a massive undertaking with, with all those kids. So, that's why that workday is thrown in there. It's not, no, it's not holidays back-to-back. They've got a lot of work to get ready to go for the second semester, starting on January the twenty-first. We have our PD day, similar to what we're having this coming Monday. That will be on Friday the thirteenth, one day to have a PD day. And you can see, we got a couple of half-days thrown in there, March the thirteenth, May the eighth. We actually, our parent representative actually said something during our Calendar Committee. I was talking to Ms. Robin Smith. She said, "In all the years she's been doing that, a parent has never said anything." And the parent said something about that, and the committee discussed that. And so, that's why we're looking at the two little half-days there on the thirteenth of March and the eighth of May. That's gonna be afternoon. We've got that colored orange, that's PD, but it can be afternoon vertical PLCs. We've got wide-open things for principals to do with staff on that, vertical planning, all kinds of things that could happen on those two days. And then you see our workdays. We all end on the fifth of June and the four workdays to end the school year. So, that is your first reading of the calendar. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain those at this time.
I have one with testing.
Yes, sir.
I know we used to.
I can definitely answer that.
I know we used to, we debated one time, talking, having our testing.
Yep.
Before Christmas.
And it was like that this time.
Now, is that gonna improve? I feel like that will improve our scores. Is that what y'all feel, by not having a long break?
Personally, I, I prefer that. I've seen research from the state that it's negligible.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
And that's from the county building.
Yeah.
And I get that, so. So, yeah, that, that's.
Keep in mind, too, this is one of those things that we continue to talk with our legislators about. I mean, there's, there's no, there's no shortage of, of folks who wanna start our traditional school year earlier, particularly those when you think about from the athletic standpoint, and not only that, but from the standpoint of being able to test the students before Christmas. I mean, you've got all those things that come into play. And there are some districts who choose to do that. Of course, that, that is the pleasure of the board. One of the things that I can say is following the calendar at all, I think, is important, particularly when, one of the things that we would like to do is be able to request, you know, the use of funds at some point to be able to build a new school. So, I think it's very important that we're compliant and doing things that, that our legislators appreciate at the same time. So, it is, it is a conversation, and I think most of your local folks would agree that they would like to support us, but it's gonna have to be a state-level change.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, and he's correct, too. There's a lot that, that don't follow that, and.
I know.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's the law.
So, ignore it.
We need to, they didn't. Not only that, but, yeah. And I, I'm not a fan of that. It's the law. We're gonna follow.
Thank you. Wait just one second. Mr. Allison, do you wanna add anything, being on the Calendar Committee?
No, I reviewed it, and I think, I think this'll work fine, the way the, the days are set up. I believe that's in the best interest of the kids.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate you, sir.
All right. Mr. Hughes, appreciate you. We want to just remind everybody that this is a first read. So, we will bring this calendar back to you next month. If you guys, as a board, have any critiques that you'd like to see us do, we'll do that. But I, I just wanna remind you that we'd like to be able to approve the calendar. It's important for us to be able to send that into the state in the March-April timeframe. They like to see what we're doing, so they can make sure we're following the law, which I appreciate. Next up, Mr. Hughes is gonna give us a brief update on the new student information system. And I will tell you that we are in round two of this. Much of the state began that round at the beginning of this year, and I am very grateful that we decided to be part of Cohort Two rather than Cohort One, because there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of concerns with it. But I'm confident that DPI and, and their team have been working around the clock to get some of those bugs worked out. So, sometimes it's not best to be first. In this instance, I would argue that it's not. So, Mr. Hughes.
Yeah, so, next year, we'll start with a, a new student information system. This year, we're on Power School, have been since, I guess, my second year here in thirteen, fourteen. It's gonna be, it's called Infinite Campus. We've been working, I say we, me and Mr. Berryhill, Ms. Dillingham have been working and meeting with them on and off since about mid-November. They've been collecting stuff and, and, and trying to start the process of importing it into their system. It's, it's a big undertaking, but I feel, and, and I don't wanna put Mr. Berryhill on the spot, but to, to ask, but we've talked about that before, and, and, you know, they've got the dates laid out for us, saying, "This is when we want to do this. We want to do this on this date, this on this date." I, I think it's gone really smoothly from my end, looking at it from, from this view. It's, it's a, it's, it's a big, big undertaking when you're flipping systems. One of the first things we have to have them are the dates for the start of the school year. And I have to have that to them on February the twenty-first. We got to have the start at the end of the school year, all the quarter changeovers. That's the actual first thing that's going to go into the new make of Infinite Campus. So, we'll have, we'll have that to them on the twenty-first. Data managers, Ms. Dillingham has had the data managers in here about three times. They've still got two more times to go. Trying to clean up our data in Power School, and I can tell, and I'll tell you why. Road names, street names, extensions, and things like that. I used to live on Lincoln Avenue when I was first married. Lincoln Avenue, A V E, or Lincoln Avenue, fully spelled out, or Lincoln Avenue, A V E, period. That's three ways of saying the same thing. We've been trying to get all of those saying the same thing, because their naming conventions are a little bit different, and we're trying to make sure that all of our stuff is there. We've also, Ms. Dillingham took it upon herself. She called now, or got with the nine-one-one folks, and we have a huge spreadsheet of the official nine-one-one addresses. So, we're trying to clean those up and making sure they match watching nine-one-one, because we sure don't want somebody going to forty-two Lincoln Avenue, and, and it say forty-two Lincoln Drive, that's a different place. And so, we're trying to make sure everything matches up with the nine-one-one system so that we have accurate stuff in case something crazy happens that we're telling them the right place. So, that's one of the things that they've been working at. Principals, we've talked with principals about this. They need to have their master schedules in Power School by April the eighteenth, because that's gonna be the next big thing that gets pulled out of there. And then, we'll have teacher trainers. What we did the last time, and I was part of this, we had teacher trainers that came from each school that learned how to do the Great Book and taking attendance and things like that, and we all got them together here, and then we sent them out to train the folks at their school. And that's how we're gonna try to approach that again this time. It worked really well last time. North Carolina is a train-the-trainer state, and why I say that, as the testing guy, I get trained as a region. I come back and train our folks. Our folks go out to their school and train their school. So, that's the way we're gonna do it with this as well. And so, that's just, it's a myriad of things that have to go on. We're meeting with them bi-weekly, but I think in the next two weeks, we've got five meetings, because we're starting to do this, 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 and this, converting it over, and we'll have a, a place site where we can look and see if things are actually working the way they're supposed to. So, that's the update on it from the campus. New start in twenty-five, twenty-six, and if you see the Eastfield calendar, they get started early, because it's on Ju-, uh, July the tenth, and that'll be right after the changeover. So, that's where we are. I'll keep you updated as things go along, and if you have any, I'll let you back at it unless you have any questions for me.
Does anybody have anything for Mr. Hughes?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Board reports.
Mr. Settles, we got anything in curriculum and instruction? Got anything coming on?
Mr. Chairman, since we have not met yet, and I'm, you know, the new chairman of the committee, I'd like to ask you and Dr. Grit both, and if Ms. Rayfield and Ms. Ward and maybe Ms. Hamby could hang around for the start of closed session. This particularly has to do with personnel, so I think we can do it during closed session. Just to ask a couple of follow-up questions on the curriculum and instruction part about some of the stuff that has been mentioned to us. Just some questions, just to clarify, because I wanna make sure that this committee's doing what we're supposed to do, and that's taking care of the chi, the kids on the curriculum and instruction. So, if you're okay with that, and you have no objections, I'd just like, and pause supper for five or ten minutes. Ms. Ward, I love your shoes, by the way. If, if they don't mind, I would, and you don't have any objections, I'd just like to do that at closed session.
Okay, Mr. Barxel, buildings and grounds?
Buildings and ground, we are going to be scheduling a meeting here very shortly, so I'll be contacting y'all soon.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Shuford, you, you've definitely been busy.
Yeah, that's, that's extended my report, though. I already, I already taken much out of there.
And Ms. Dillingham, you've definitely been busy.
Yeah, we actually did meet this past Thursday, but nothing to report at this time.
Okay. So how are we policy, are we update, updated, at good shape?
Yes.
Oh, that's awesome. Greg and I can remember when we first came on, it was, we were probably two years behind. It, it was terrible.
We got a little bit, we got a little bit behind with the transition of the board, but we're really right on the schedule with that. Yes, sir.
Hmm.
Next up, we have a memo that you guys should have, a letter there from Ms. Rampy, and what I'm gonna be talking to you about is a project that was going on at McDowell Early College and McDowell Academy for Innovation, as well as a partnership with the Community College. In this memo, you can see that there's an estimated $1.4 million proposal for work upgrades to the auditorium at the Community College. And Dr. Kelly and his team came to us, and they talked about what could we do to help support them in that. To be completely honest with you, during, during COVID, there were a number of funds that went out to most every single school, to do things like you see here, which is floors and air conditioning and different things like that. One of the things that we struggled to do was, because it's not our building or our facility, was to be able to do any upgrades at the Community College. And I, and I noted that when I talked with Dr. Kelly about that. You'll see that with approximately 435,000 of that being allocated for AV equipment, and that's the audiovisual and lighting type equipment that will go into the auditorium. One of the things that we talked about was being able to share some of those costs, and I, I felt like that that was an appropriate ask on Dr. Kelly's part, for us to be able to do that. Our students utilize that space every Friday, they use it routinely. I think it's also a good win for the community to have an additional auditorium that's, that's up to par, and that's one of those projects that they really want to tackle. They haven't set out for bids or anything at this point, they're just doing the initial work on that. And I, my recommendation to the board is, within this memo, I, I would recommend that we would do somewhere around half of that, so we would be a true partner in that cost. And I will tell you that that would not necessarily mean that we spend that money this year, that may be money that's earmarked that gets spent when the project is actually taking place. Ms. Rampy did bring this up to the Finance Committee, and we, we had some discussion on it. I think it's a great opportunity for us to, to partner and to take care of a, a group of folks that we didn't necessarily have an opportunity to take care of during that COVID time. So at this point, I would, I would open the floor to any questions on that.
Where will those funds be drawn from?
It's, it's capital funds, and, and I did explain to Dr. Kelly that it would be very difficult for us to fix, necessarily fix something that's on a community college, because we, we, we don't technically own that facility, that's one that belongs to the county and to the Community College itself, but the, the equipment i- is different. That's something that our students can access, and, and we can actually share some, we can share some equipment, in other words. Yes, sir. But that can come out of the capital, local, local type budget.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We could, we could say to them, "You're on your own, partner."
We could easily say, "You're on your own, partner."
That's not, I don't think, what is conducive of what we should do. I, I agree with sharing in the cost.
Okay. Mr. Abernathy, I appreciate that, I know you're, you're on that committee. Chairman, my, my, my recommendation was that we would do half of the, half of that cost, and that would, that'd be my recommendation.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion, and Mr. Shuford, as chairman of that committee...
Mr. Chairman, I'd need to recuse myself from any decision on this, because I'm a employee of McDowell Tech Community College.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion. And are you up to half, or half of whatever the project ends up being?
I think we could, there's a number of ways we could do that, I mean, it, the, the total that he's, that, and it's a pretty, it's a solid estimate, but I mean, depending on when the work takes place, that may change, but his estimate was 435,000 for that project, so ha- half of that, or somewhere around in the 220,000, 215,000 dollar range, I think would be...
I'm approving my motion.
Yes.
Okay, do we have to say?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt before we go any further, but to echo Mr. Shuford's comments, I am also an employee of McDowell Tech, so I will also be recusing myself from discussion and vote on that matter.
Thank you.
So I would, yeah, I'll second it. I'm not an employee, so I can second it.
You and I are the only two.
Oh, yeah. But I would say, we definitely need to put a dollar figure on there, just in case the estimates come back a little different. So, saying 220, if that's what Mr. Abernathy said, I would second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the audiovisual equipment purchase for McDowell Tech Community College? Okay, I'm gonna restate the amount of the, our commitment for the audiovisual equipment, which is $220,000, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We don't have any further discussions, so all those members that are in favor of that signify by raising your right hand. Of course, we've got two that are recusing themselves, so that'll be seven vote.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item number 13 is approval consent agenda, and I want to remind you that we had an amendment to the agenda to add on the NJROTC trip as well. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion, if you wanna approve the whole consent agenda, we can do it, or anybody has an item they want pulled, we can do it separately. But at this time, if nobody wants anything pulled separately, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, as per...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second. I'll second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, you're struggling, I, I feel for you. I understand, though, I'm doing myself. And Mr. Shuford seconds. Is there any further discussion on approval of the consent agenda? Having no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand, which is a majority, unanimous? And we'll come up to a closed session, will be requested this time, so I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion, we'll go into closed session.